Good evening. This is the City of Morro Bay City Council Regular Meeting. It is Tuesday, January 26, 2021. It is 5:30 p.m. This meeting is being held via teleconference pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N29-20 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17, 2020. This meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on Cable Channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for the meeting. The clerk will be placing up instructions to access public comment at the appropriate time. We'll give you instructions then and want to just welcome you to our meeting. With that, I will ask the clerk to establish a quorum if she would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here, here, excuse me.
Councilmember Barton?
Laurel, you're on mute. I see you.
Councilmember Barton is here, I see her.
I'm here, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
I am present.
Councilmember Heller?
I'm here, thank you.
Mayor Heller.
And present, we do have a forum. I will call the meeting to order and ask in your own way if you'd just take a moment of silence to remember all those affected by the pandemic and the significant increase in morbidity and mortality that we're experiencing across the country as well as here in San Luis Obispo County and the state. And also, if you would, remember those potentially to be affected by the ongoing restrictions placed upon not only businesses but individuals with regard to the pandemic. So we'll take a moment of silence, thank you. We'll go ahead and ask for the flag to be displayed on the screen and we'll move to our pledge of allegiance, please. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that, I appreciate that. And ask if our esteemed counselor, Mr. Niermeier, has a closed session report for us, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No closed session items to report.
Good, thank you, Chris, appreciate that. We'll go ahead and move to mayor and councilmembers announcements and presentation. I will open up since there have been significant changes with regard to information with COVID-19 changes that have occurred in the county, not only the county but also nationally. Very briefly, from a statistical standpoint, our cases today as of January 26, we had 194 new cases, bringing our total to 17,151 total cases in our county. The total number of deaths in San Luis Obispo County sadly is at 161. There are 15,109 people that have recovered from COVID-19 and for that, we are very grateful. As you probably know, the county has, part of the region that we are, Southern California region, has moved away from the regional stay-at-home order. The governor lifted the regional stay-at-home order as of January 25, 2021. There are a number of modifications that have occurred, just a couple of which include the reopening of hair salons, barber shops, outdoor dining, hotels and lodging in general, limited personal care services, including skincare services, nail services, body art professionals, tattoo parlors and piercing shops, as well as massage services. Retail is able to increase capacity as well as shopping centers are able to increase capacity. If you want to get detailed information on the reopening criteria as we've moved back into Tier 1, go to readyslow.org. That's R-E-A-D-Y-S-L-O dot org. In addition, I wanted to update you with regard to vaccinations in Slow County, perhaps the number one thing on our minds at present. The changes I want to note is, and we'll get more information from our fire chief this evening, on the upcoming storm, but if you had an appointment at the San Luis Obispo Clinic on Wednesday, January 27, in order to ensure patient's safety because they don't have adequate indoor space, those appointments will be changing to next week and that site will not be open on Wednesday tomorrow. So again, if you do have an appointment in San Luis Obispo, those appointments will be automatically rescheduled to Monday, February 1, and you should be notified by the county of that change. The other two clinics, and now we have three clinics, the other two are in Paso Robles. That clinic will operate as planned tomorrow during the storm due to adequate indoor capacity as well as the Aurora Grande Vaccination Clinic. And so, again, if you have an appointment for tomorrow in San Luis Obispo, please know that that is rescheduled for next week, Monday, February 1. In San Luis Obispo County, to date, the Public Health Department has received a total of 22,660 vaccines. Total first doses administered are 13,625 and about 9,035 second doses have been given. The number of people vaccinated in the county now stands at a total of 10,539 total individuals. And that's just for public health, not for hospitals, other healthcare entities that have received dosing. And we are beginning to see a number of retail pharmacies receive the vaccine as well. The capacity for vaccination at the three clinics is really the issue. In Paso Robles, there's a capacity to do 1,000 vaccines a day, however, there's only enough doses now being distributed to this county to allow for about 400 to 500 doses per day. At the San Luis Obispo site, they're doing 750 to 1,000 doses per day. And in Aurora Grande, right now, it's approximately between 400 and 500 doses per day. If you would like to make an appointment to receive a vaccine, all current appointments are filled, but you have the next opportunity Wednesday, excuse me, Thursday morning of this week to make next week's vaccine appointments. That registration information is on readyslow.org again at the website. And it opens up in terms of being able to register on Thursday morning at 9:00 a.m. So if you are 75 or older, or if you fall into the Tier 1 group or Phase 1 group of individuals, which mainly includes healthcare professionals, first responders, et cetera, you may make an appointment at present. I think the number one question I get asked is when will the age group of 65 or older begin to open up? And currently, with regard to the potential for increased supply in the future, the county is estimating somewhere between four to eight weeks. And so, we'll continue to try to update you about that as we go. Currently, two vaccines remain available, the Pfizer vaccine as well as the Moderna vaccine. The issue with Moderna vaccine that you may have read about, with regard to one lot of Moderna vaccine, has been cleared by the state and the federal government and that lot is available and is found to be safe and effective. And so, with that, if you have, again, any questions, you can go to the city website, but primarily, the majority of information is available on readyslow.org. Thank you, that takes care of my announcements. I'll move to Councilmember Heller, sir, announcements.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to publicly thank all the members of the community who've served on advisory committees and boards over the last many years. Transition going on with COVID restrictions, we can't typically celebrate and honor you the way we typically have in the past. We did have a great drive-by appreciation event at the community center a few weeks ago. I thank Scott Collins and Kirk Carmichael and city staff for putting that together. But I wanted to reach out to each and every one of you who have devoted your time to the city and I'm trying to, hope that you can get you some certificates or something to recognize you more formally in the future for all your work and want to thank you for that. And that is my announcement for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Barton, any announcements this evening?
Yes, I have had the pleasure of being, participating in the League of California Cities the last two, Thursday and Friday, getting to go through the training for new councilmembers. And this is something in the past, I have done this in person, but now it's, of course, it's on Zoom, but it was still just such an excellent presentation and very, very interesting because essentially you are, on those days, you are taking the temperature of California and who are the new electeds? And it was just fascinating to hear the wide, wide variety of people who have gotten themselves elected to city councils statewide. I look forward to this coming Thursday and Friday, there are also sessions again. Anyways, very, very valuable.
Well, thank you for that. I've always found those to be quite educational and so glad that you had the opportunity to attend. Councilmember Addis, please, any announcements?
Yes, I actually have three different announcements. I went to a League of Cities meeting this week as well, different from the training that Councilmember Barton went to. And we heard about the budget surplus from the governors, well, representative from League of Cities talking about the budget surplus for California, but the need to advocate with the governor around getting some of that money to the cities. And then, another really encouraging thing is that a number of cities are working on inclusion and equity initiatives. And the league is going to help facilitate a conversation around what cities can do to improve their inclusion and equity. And then I also, as the We Are the Care liaison, attended the We Are the Care webinar. And We Are the Care is part of First 5, looking at how to create more childcare across Slow County. And they are, at this time, they're in such, an agreement with Slow City as well as San Luis Coastal School District to do a feasibility study and then look at possible actions that could be taken across our county to increase childcare access. And then, I wanted to also say thank you to the over 200 participants who tuned in last Saturday at 10:30 for the Women's March. We had an amazing event and you can still see it at Women's March Slow on YouTube or on Facebook, but it was just so wonderful to have so many people participate and there was excellent feedback. And I guess I have four announcements. So the fourth is that I was contacted by Meredith Bates, resident of Morro Bay, who has become a board member for Slow Village, which is an organization that's driven by membership that provides support to seniors. And they're really looking at how to get vaccine information out to seniors across Slow County. So I just wanted to briefly share that that website is slowvillage.org for folks that might be interested or for seniors in the community that need another resource or more support.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis, appreciate those announcements. Councilmember Davis, sir?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Gail and I ride our bikes down to Tideland Park sometimes to have lunch there and we've always noticed how clean the restrooms are at the park along with the park, the benches and the tables, they're always clean and ready to use. And I ran into the young man who does that cleanup, working at the giant chessboard. He's one of our great city employees, Brandon Chamberlain. So I thank Brandon for his work. He's very proud of what he does and it shows. So I want to publicly say thank you, Brandon Chamberlain, for the great care that you show for our city. Second item, on a sad note, last week, we lost a former member of our police department, canine officer Zello. Zello and his handler Stephanie Pippen began their partnership here in Morro Bay. And I've asked Chief Cox if he could say a few words about what the two of them meant to our community. Chief Cox?
Yes, Councilmember Davis, thank you for this opportunity. And I'm going to ask our city clerk, Dana, she should throw a picture up on the screen for us. Zello was an amazing canine. He started his career with Officer Stephanie Pippen as Morro Bay Police Department's first full-service patrol dog in 2012. He specialized in patrol, hard-surface tracking and narcotic searches. He was the first hard-surface tracking patrol dog in Slow County. Through the years, he kept his partner safe by detaining suspects without creating further incidents or injuries and helped keep drugs off the streets. He was also responsible for helping locate numerous lost children and elderly adults throughout his career here. Zello was not only close with his patrol partners, but he became close to this community. Many of you may recall that it was a community fundraising effort that helped bring Zello to the city. Zello gave back by participating in several events such as the Harbor Festival, the Avocado Festival, and his own event, which was the Morro Bay Dog Walk that was held every year. He enjoyed the love he received from the community members and showing off his unique talents and canine displays over the years that he was here in Morro Bay. In 2016, Zello and Officer Pippen relocated to another department here locally, but kept in touch with his Morro Bay community. And they returned several times to assist us with special events such as Amgen and National Night Out as well as other events. Zello retired in 2018 and he got to spend the rest of his life as a pet protector with his only known handler, Stephanie Pippen. Zello was loved by both his Morro Bay and Cal Poly communities and he will not be forgotten. I spoke with Stephanie today and she sends her love and appreciation for the support she has received and that Zello has received from our community. So thank you, council, for giving us the opportunity to recognize Zello and the contributions he made here to Morro Bay Police Department.
Thank you, Chief Cox, appreciate that recognition. Remember when Zello first arrived in the community and what a joy it was for us to have that participation and sorry to hear about the passing. Councilmember Davis, did you have further comments?
No, sir, that's it for me tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Turn to our city manager, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers and members of the community. I just wanted to give a brief update as I'm sure most are aware, with the news reports, we're expecting a potential significant rainstorm to hit our community in the Central Coast tomorrow morning, Wednesday, probably early morning around 4:00 or 5:00 a.m. And it's an atmospheric river that can bring significant rainfall and wind. And we're projecting anywhere from six to 12 inches in the Central Coast. Where that'll land, what gets impacted the most heavily is all dependent upon the conditions of the morning, but we expect that we will have rainfall and significant wind all day tomorrow. So we're asking residents to stay inside, stay safe, and of course, be aware of their surroundings. If you notice a tree falling down that's large or power lines coming down or any significant flooding, please call 911. Our crews are standing by and ready to assist. The city is prepared, our community and our infrastructure to be ready for this. Our storm drains have been cleared and we have secured our capital improvement sites and construction sites. And we've reached out to residents in the low-lying areas, including transients, who live near flood zones, to warn them. And we're going to have staff from each of our departments be ready on call in the evening hours if we're still needed to clear scenes. And depending on the severity of the storm, the degree of the flooding or other damage, we will be able to establish either a community center or another facility as an evacuation center. So your staff is prepared. Thankfully, with the experience we've had with the pandemic and having our Emergency Operations Center operating since March of last year, we're ready for this. But we just want to make sure our community is prepared and stay home. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, I very much appreciate that. And thank you for being proactive. And please, thank Chief Knuckles and your staff for making the community aware about this potential major issue, major storm. With that, we'll go ahead and move to presentations. This evening, we have two presentations. And I'm excited tonight to hear from our partners and friends from Vistra Energy. With us this evening, we have Mr. Eric Chernish and Brad Watson, who are representing Vistra this evening. We're excited about some of the changes that may be coming to Morro Bay and learning about the transition of Vistra as a company to one of fossil fuel-based to renewable-based company. With that, I wanted to say, Mr. Chernish, welcome, and Mr. Watson, welcome. You have the floor and we're ready for your presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor. And first, let me apologize that I really wanted to join you in the video, but my camera's not working, so I'll have to work off the audio for a while. And maybe you'll get to see Eric when he comes up.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Heding and members of the city council, Mr. Collins and staff and residents of Morro Bay. Thank you for the invitation to appear before you tonight and for sharing some of your time with us. My name is Brad Watson and I'm the Director of Community Affairs for Vistra. And joining me tonight, as the mayor said, for our presentation is Eric Chernus. He's the Senior Director for Corporate Development and Strategy at Vistra. At the onset, let me say on behalf of our company, we're excited at the potential of joining you in a combined effort together to build this project in Morro Bay and San Luis Obispo County. The Morro Bay Energy Storage Facility would create many benefits for Morro Bay and the region by revitalizing an existing retired power plant site using active transmission lines, enhancing grid stability, filling the reliability gap created by intermittent renewables, providing clean, emission-free, affordable electricity to consumers, supporting California's sustainability goals and mandates, and importantly, benefiting the community through a major capital investment that diversifies the local economy and the tax base. Before Eric gives you details of the project, I'd like to spend a few moments, if I could, introducing you to our company and go ahead and share our screen here. Hope everybody can see that. Vistra is a leading integrated retail electricity and power generation company, operating in 20 states and the District of Columbia, including six of the seven competitive wholesale markets in the U.S. and also retail markets in Canada and Japan. Simply what this means is that we generate electricity at more than 50 plant sites and sell the power through our dozen retail brands. Vistra currently serves about 4.3 million customers across 19 states and the District of Columbia through our brands, offering more than 50 renewable energy plans. Vistra is committed to lead in the global effort to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. As the nation and California transition away from electricity generated by fossil fuels, our company has proactively set a greenhouse gas emissions reduction plan with specific targets, a 60% cut by 2030 off a 2010 baseline and net zero by 2050. With our carbon emissions down already about 40%, we're well on our way to hitting that 2030 goal. We're transitioning to zero carbon in a number of ways. By building solar generation and battery storage facilities, so that by 2030, we plan to have 9,000 megawatts of zero-carbon generation. And by methodically retiring coal plants. Another 7,500 megawatts will retire over the next few years for a total by 2027 of 20,000 megawatts retired since 2010. And to put that in a little bit of context for you, 20,000 megawatts is more than 40% of the highest demand day for power in California last year. Vistra believes the best way to reduce greenhouse gases in our nation is with an economy-wide, adequately priced carbon fee and dividend plan with a border tax adjustment, as you see up there at the top of the right side of your page. And we're advocating for a carbon fee and reduce carbon emissions through several initiatives, including the Climate Leadership Council, where Vistra is a founding member. Vistra believes that we have a responsibility, though, beyond generating and selling electricity, that our company must be part of the solution for the social, equity and environmental challenges facing our nation. That starts with our own corporate action, with standing programs that help customers who are having tough financial times to pay their bills, donating to Feeding America to Fight Hunger, and even donating a portion of profits from one of our retail brands to charity. And community giving there at the lower left part of your page. Vistra is donating $10 million over five years to support social justice groups, advancing business and educational opportunities to minority and underserved communities. Millions are already donated each year to local communities where our company facilities are located. And Vistra is a strong supporter of the United Way. We care for our people and communities. For example, as we retire fossil fuel plants, we're committed to assisting employees and communities through the transition. And safety is an unwavering principle at our company. Our training and culture are constant to keep our employees and work sites safe. Now, California is an important state and market for us. You see a couple of our retail brands there at the top and our generation and battery storage sites. At Oakland, we operate a small power plant that's to retire soon. And at that same site, we're developing a new battery storage project. At Moss Landing, we still operate a high-efficiency natural gas plant and recently announced the Moss Landing Energy Storage Facility, the largest in the world, is now tied to the grid. I'd like to bring in Eric now to tell you more about the proposed energy storage project at Morro Bay. Eric?
Perfect. Hey, thank you very much, Brad. And thank you, Mayor Heding, and members of the city council and staff and residents of Morro Bay for the opportunity to share. I'm pleased to be able to share some details about the Morro Bay or the energy storage facility that we propose at the Morro Bay Power Plant. Vistra is proposing a 600-megawatt lithium ion battery installation located within the northwestern portion of the property. Brad, if you don't mind just going back one slide, just so we can see that for one more moment. This is located on the location of where the old tank farm used to be, and you can see it depicted in the picture on the screen. The project would occupy approximately 22 acres of the 107-acre site and would include three new buildings with a total of 273,000 square feet. To get a sense of the size of this project, it would hold enough energy to power approximately 450,000 homes. So it's a major infrastructure project. The plan would have the new battery facility online by the end of 2024 to coincide with the retirement of the Diablo Canyon Nuclear Generation Station. To accomplish this timing, work would need to start on the property next year. The project would be able to utilize much of the existing infrastructure and be able to tie into the existing PGE substation without the need for any new transmission lines. The battery facility is designed to help California and the Central Coast manage the excess renewable energy that already exists and will also create room for more renewables to add on the existing transmission system. The batteries help by storing renewable energy from the grid when it is plentiful, like during the middle of the day when the sun is shining. The batteries would then store that excess energy until it is needed, like when the sun sets. The installation of the batteries helps grid reliability and maximize the use of zero-carbon Through collaboration with the city of Morro Bay and San Luis Obispo County, there will be tangible benefits. Vistra has a community benefit policy. The investments required would materially contribute to the tax base through property taxes, which benefit a multitude of institutions. And we anticipate significant job creation during construction. And we anticipate significant job creation during construction and eventual operation of the facility. Right, if you could switch to the next slide, that'd be great. So here's another view of the facility facing south, towards downtown, where you can see the existing plant, the stacks, and the PG&E substation kind of on the to the left of the the power plant. So the energy storage facility is composed of three key components. First are the roughly 180,000 lithium-ion batteries, which are stored in 7,200 racks, which will be located in three low-profile, 30-foot-high buildings. The buildings will have screens extending up to 10 additional feet to accommodate heating and cooling equipment that will rest on the roof. Second, there are 180 power conversion systems located around the buildings. The power conversion systems change the direct current to alternating current and vice versa. This is required because when we use electricity, it is typically an alternating current, but the batteries store electricity in direct current, so conversion is required. Third, there will be three project-level substations. These facilities will tie into the existing PG&E substation located adjacent to the property. The project-level substations step up and down the voltage to match PG&E system. I would like, like Brad, to highlight that safety is a key priority for Vistra. Energy storage industry is changing rapidly, and Vistra is a leader in design, construction, and operation of these facilities. The facilities will adhere to all codes and standards, as well as industry best practices, which sometimes lead the implementation of new codes. We will continue to coordinate directly with the Morro Bay Fire Department and city staff regarding the design of the facility. So I know this was short, but we appreciate the opportunity to introduce this project at a very high level to the council and the Morro Bay community. We look forward to working collaboratively to make this project a success. Now, I would like to add that we have prepared a short appendix, which includes a case study from Monterey County, which is where Vistra recently constructed a 300-megawatt battery project at the Moss Landing Power Plant. This is similar to characteristics to Morro Bay, so I wanted to leave it up to Mayor Heding, whether you'd like us to just quickly flip through that. It'd only take a minute or two, or if you'd like to utilize this time for for questions.
No, Eric, please go forward. We'd love to see this. Thank you.
You bet. Well, thanks. Brad's already there, so thank you. I'm pleased to present the Moss Landing Energy Storage Facility. This is the largest energy storage system in the world at this time, with a size of 300 megawatts. So this is about half the size of what we are being proposed at Morro Bay. As you can see, the facility is located on the coast in Moss Landing, California, and is located at the Moss Landing Power Plant Site. Moss Landing, similar to Morro Bay, had retired units six and seven, which are the two large smoke stacks. In addition, it had retired units one through five, which are left to the stacks, which you can see there's a building a little bit left to from those stacks, right? And the battery facility was placed inside the old turbine hall, located on the left side of the image. If we can flip Brad, we can zoom in a little bit. Thank you. The battery building was able to be repurposed for the batteries and is nearly three football fields long. The batteries are located within the cement building, and you can see the power conversion systems that are located outside in a very similar design that we're proposing for the Morro Bay facility, except we have to build the new create the new buildings rather than being able to utilize the existing facilities. Here is a picture inside the building showing the rows of racks. We would anticipate a similar setup at Morro Bay. The Moss Landing project used over 500,000 feet of wires and cables for the battery system. That's about the distance from Philadelphia to New York, but it's also probably more relevant, the distance between Morro Bay and Baker's Field. So quite a bit of work has gone in, and this is for a 300-megawatt facility, which is about half the size of what we're proposing at at Morro. So we can leave this slide up and answer any questions you may have with the remaining time, Mayor. And thank you so much for the opportunity to address the council, and we look forward to, you know, it's quite a bit of work that needs to be done, both on our side and the city, and we look forward to collaboration.
Great, Eric, thank you both. Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Eric, for a great presentation. For our community, I want to open it up to our council members and see if there are any questions. Councilmember Davis, sir, do you have questions?
No, I don't have any questions, Mayor. Thank you.
You bet. Councilmember Heller?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. You stated you wanted to complete the facility by 2024. Is there a downside to you if it goes beyond that, or is that a hard date that you have to meet for some reason?
Yeah, it's a target. I think that's what we're trying to put out there. Diablo Canyon is scheduled to start retirement the end of 2024, so there's a need for reliable energy service starting at that time. And so that's the target that we're shooting at. I don't think there's a drop dead date one way or the other, but I think we have to have a goal in mind. And this facility is really meant to support the California grid when we lose that facility. It will also help us put more renewables onto the grid by taking them off when we have excess, so.
Okay, that's that's my only question. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Barton, any questions? You're muted, Laura. There you go.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you for making this presentation and also for including the Moss Landing pictures. It's much easier to visualize and think about the project when you can see pictures of it, so I thank you for the presentation.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Addis, questions?
Yes, thank you, Eric, and thank you, Brad. You may have mentioned this, but what is the carbon reduction, or do you know, just from the Morro Bay plant? I heard your overall goals and how close you're getting to those goals, but what would this plant again contribute to that?
Councilmember, do you are you asking, is there a carbon reduction from the natural gas plant at Moss Landing?
Well, just what like adding Morro Bay, what would that do in terms of would it complete the goal, I guess is about to them asking, would it complete meeting those carbon reduction goals that you all have? Or what would, I'm not sure the way to say this, like what would be the specific contribution from Morro Bay coming online to get to those goals?
For our company, yeah, I think I understand. For our for our company goals, we are currently building right now solar generation around the country at other in other states, and also battery storage, because there's a particular resource adequacy need in California. The 600-megawatt facility at Morro Bay would really contribute to that greenhouse gas reduction. For our company, yes, it's part of the 9,000 megawatts of zero carbon we're shooting for for 2030. But here's here's the thing why battery storage is really a really new thing and can really change in a disruptive technological way what happens in the grid. It captures that excess solar during the day. And in California, there is a lot of solar energy that's generated during the afternoon. And the way the grid is set up in the United States now, California and elsewhere, is that there has to be a perfect match between generation and demand at the same time. That's what CAISO does, the grid operator. It does that balancing act every day. Well, if that solar generation isn't consumed, it's just lost. What the battery storage does is capture it during the day so that it can be used when the sun goes down, wind doesn't blow, and it can be used into the evening, or perhaps all night or into the morning. To here's the other point, is that there is a demand for power, but instead of building a new billion-dollar, 600-megawatt natural gas plant that has its emissions, yes, lower than coal, and the plants now are pretty efficient and low emitting, it's still a fossil fuel. We don't need to build another gas plant in California. We have these batteries. So it goes a long way to not require any further building of fossil fuels. And for our own company, yes, to your point, it would, you know, add 600 megawatts as part of our overall development plan to get there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. There we go. Brad and Eric, thanks again. Just a couple of questions. One, it's exciting to to see what you're proposing, and we appreciate the fact that you guys have submitted that to our planning department, and it's currently being vetted. And I think I can speak for council, we're very much looking forward to working with you to see exactly what comes of this great project. Can you talk to us a little bit about any environmental issues that might be associated, if any, with lithium-ion battery storage projects, certainly as compared to fossil fuel plants or natural gas type plants? We know major differences, but are there any environmental issues that the community should be concerned about?
Brad, if you don't mind, I'll take this one.
Sure.
You know, there really aren't a lot of environmental issues, right? The base product of a lithium-ion battery is, you know, close to 90, 95% recyclable. They tend to be recycled at slightly less efficiencies, just because the resources inside the United States right now are still ramping up in preparation for these. But that's the anticipated goal, is in that kind of 90% range. So there there aren't a lot of environmental difficulties associated with it. One of the things that needs to be monitored, though, on lithium-ion batteries specifically, and you find this in your cell phone, or you might have seen an article around, you know, maybe a vehicle having a fire, is is you have all this energy that's stored, and so making sure that you're monitoring that and you have the ability to discharge that energy in a safe fashion. And so there's a lot that's happening kind of in the codes and regulations as we've ramped up inside the United States that are addressing those. That's also why I said sometimes those codes take time to take effect. So most of our projects are being implemented with kind of industry best practices, which can move and change a little bit faster than some of the code organizations. So right now, as long as there's, you know, sustainable planning involved, there really is not an environmental, you know, quote unquote, impact associated with the facility.
I figure that was probably true, but wanted to be sure our community heard that and and that you gave us the the great technical explanation of specifically what's involved with that. And I know that this will contribute significantly to meeting state goals, and I assume you've had consistent interaction with the governor and and his group in terms of goals, and maybe you could just talk a little bit about what Vistra has done with the state of California and partnering?
Well, we partner with the state in a lot of different fashions. I think what we found at Moss Landing, being that it was one of the largest facilities in the world, was also one of the first facilities to be connected at the transmission level within especially within the PG&E area. So when you're doing those things for the first, I think there's a lot of communication that needs to happen between the regulatory bodies and the developers. So it's an interesting kind of, you know, public-private partnership as we all, you know, figure out how to do this the first time, and trying to do it right the first time, because we know that there's a lot that's behind us. You know, we are not the only developer looking to put storage in California. There are a lot of parties that are looking to do that in different areas. So I think it's been more of a collaboration of, we all know where that where we're trying to go, and we're trying to figure out how best to get there by minimizing cost to rate pairs. And that's one of the reasons why Moss Landing, our Oakland facility, and now Morro Bay have been high on our list of priorities, is because we're reutilizing existing infrastructure, right? On the site where we're going, there are restrictions of what can physically go on that site. So this is one of the higher best uses of that piece of property, and we're reutilizing the existing kind of PG&E substation, so we're not having to build something, you know, and bring the power a long distance. So this is there's there's a lot of positives, I think, in this early phase of energy storage, where you're just trying to find where are those right locations. And we feel strongly that Morro Bay is a is a great location and can really provide support for the local region.
Well, thank you, Eric and Brad. And just for the community's information, this presentation will be available on our website, I assume tomorrow or the next day, should you want to revisit this. And I just say I look forward to, and our council looks forward to, working with you as you move the project forward. Community, you'll have plenty of opportunity to ask questions and give public comment, both at the Planning Commission level and then at the City Council level. And again, I do want to just highlight Vistra's commitment to the communities it works with. Thank you for your comments regarding social justice initiatives and community benefits. I think that's extremely important, and we look forward to partnering with you in the future. Thank you both for being here this evening.
And in parting, if I might add, Mayor and council, that we do view this as a partnership. We can't do this by ourselves. We want to listen to the council. We want to listen to business leaders. We want to listen to residents. This is something we're going to have to do together, as I said at the beginning of my my comments, so that it truly is a win-win type project. There are so many benefits that we can all enjoy for this incredible opportunity. And to follow on what Eric said also, it really goes to the heart of sustainability in that we are going to repurpose what had been a retired fossil fuel site using existing infrastructure and and be able to use that renewable energy you're generating now, especially through solar in California, and make sure that it's put to use throughout the day. You know, the wrap-on renewables are that they're intermittent. Here's an opportunity to use that energy, not just sunrise to sunset, but as the technology and the scale improve, you know, this is how you can power, you know, a grid almost 24/7. So but we're going to have to do it together, and we're looking forward to that. And I look forward to meeting you all personally at some point when we're out there in pandemic conditions.
Well, great.
Thanks for thanks again for inviting us today.
Absolutely. Thanks for taking the time to be here this evening. I know you'll also be making a number of other presentations. Thanks for engaging with the chamber and and our community at large. We really appreciate that and value that tremendously. And you gentlemen, have a great evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go to our next presentation. We have John Martin, our Chair of the Citizens Finance Advisory Group, with us this evening for the annual report on Measure Q. John, thank you for your leadership, and thank you for being here this evening, and we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Heding and council members. Good evening. There is a PowerPoint presentation, which I believe Katie is probably loading, or someone is loading. If not, then we'll proceed.
When it comes up, I think it's going to be Katie. Is it coming up?
It appear I have control of screen sharing. After all that conversation, I'm sorry, John.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
All righty. So go ahead, John, or Dana, do you have control of that, or is it just not going to be available?
I this is Anthony from AGP. I have the setting set so anyone that's on the panelist's side is able to share their screen. So that should be a possibility for anyone that is on the panelist's side should be able to share their screen.
There we go. Great, thank you. Perfect.
Okay. We have part of it. Well, let's let's go ahead and proceed.
There you go, John.
All right, all right.
That work, can you see that?
Yeah, now we just need to go to slide one. Okay, thank you. Well, as Mayor Heding said, this is our annual presentation. The Citizens Oversight Committee presents the annual Measure Q transactions for the previous year in a summarized form. And then I'm also going to talk about some of our Citizens Finance Advisory Committee activities for the past year. And Measure Q was reviewed by the committee on year in a summarized form. And then I'm also going to talk about some of our Citizens Finance Advisory Committee activities for the past year. And Measure Q was reviewed by the committee on December 15. We looked at all the transactions, revenues, and expenditures. And on the revenue side, the tax revenue from the Measure Q tax, the sales tax, for the fiscal year was $987,000. So that's the next slide there, Katie. And that is a 10%, that's 10% less than what was budgeted, as a result, of course, of the COVID-19 pandemic. The total expenditures for the fiscal year were $513,000, and that is quite a bit less than normal, because when the COVID pandemic became known, it was decided to defer the pavement management plan work until a future time. And so that was not done during the fiscal year. So that results in a rather large carryover into the next fiscal year of $645,000, and that's compared with $343,000 from the previous year. Now, out of that fund balance, there is a $57,000 reserved for debt service associated with the fire department loan, fire department building loan. So that results in the unassigned fund balance of $588,000. As on the expenditure side, the fire department used $473,000 total, and that was broken up by $275,000 for vacation relief person and overtime in order to maintain more personnel per shift. And that's something that the City Council has stated is a high priority. The fire station debt service was $98,000, and there's a little bit of explanation required here, because the actual debt service during the fiscal year was $82,644. And what happened there was that there was a miscommunication between the auditors and the accounting staff, and there was a year-end adjustment made for accrued interest payable, $15,582, which should not have been made in a governmental fund, and this is a governmental fund. So it doesn't have any long-term impact on the fund, because it just gets unwound in the following fiscal year. It's just an accounting entry that shouldn't have been made, and no long-term impact. They also spent $44,000 on fire safety equipment and cardiac monitors, and $56,000 to replace the fire engine, which I believe that's the second year of five-year repayment. So the next slide, on the street maintenance, $17,000 was expended, and that was for the final year of the Skidsteer five-year lease purchase. And so I believe that piece of equipment is now owned outright by the city. And there was nothing spent on the pavement management plan, as I indicated earlier. Typically, about $500,000 per year has been going for Measure Q for the pavement management plan, but because of COVID, that was deferred. For the police department, they spent a total of $201,000, and that was comprised of $25,000 for standby pay. $30,000 was paid to the county sheriff for various things, several task forces, computer aid and dispatch, and data lines. $103,000 was spent for equipment and supplies, body cameras, tasers, and first responder kits. And then the new vehicle for the school resource officer through that car sharing program with the school district. That was $43,000. That was actually a carryover from the prior fiscal year. And then there was nothing spent on storm drains. And this is something that comes up every year in discussion at our meeting, is that for the entire history of Measure Q, storm drains have not been funded. So at that meeting in December, the committee reviewed those transactions and approved them to come to the City Council. And as far as the carryover of the unfunded or unallocated cash, the committee did not make any kind of recommendation. Typically, that happens during the mid-year budget review, and we'll see what happens at that time. That's coming up pretty soon. And we'll just continue reviewing things from the 2006 Measure Q ballot initiative. So that completes the Measure Q part, and these are some of the other CFAC accomplishments during the year. We reviewed the fiscal year comprehensive annual financial report, which I believe will be coming to you soon, the quarterly budget reports, the WRF Capital Project quarterly reports, and those have gotten to be kind of a heavy lift for us, but we're doing those, and the quarterly investment reports. And those are being handled very well by staff. And we also reviewed the city's issue survey, the joint conversation, community outreach, and the Measure E proposal. City Manager Scott Collins was gracious enough to bring that information to the committee to review and get some feedback, and he did an excellent job, and just want to congratulate the city on the successful Measure E vote that's placed in November. And then on the upcoming activities, we welcomed a new member to CFAC, Steve Peck is our newest member. He participated in our meeting last week. And we're going to be continuing the Measure Q oversight, of course, and then begin the Measure E oversight. Of course, we're assuming that the council actually wants this committee to do that, but the council could appoint a different committee, but we're thinking we'll be doing that. And then participating in the mid-year budget process. And I just want to also say that we do miss terribly Jennifer Callaway. She was such an excellent finance officer. But Katie has done an excellent job stepping into the gap, and we really appreciate her effort. She has been very transparent and has worked diligently to get us information and answer questions, and we very much appreciate that. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Great job. Thank you for your leadership on the committee. We appreciate you assuming the chair role and exerting your leadership over the group, a very active group, very involved. You review a tremendous amount of information, not only Measure Q, but also the other items that you outlined, and we so appreciate that. I just have one question that I need to ask from the standpoint of fulfillment of Measure Q initiative. In the committee's opinion, did the expenditures for Measure Q meet the intent of the ballot initiative as it outlined the issues that were to be funded through Measure Q?
Yes, completely.
Great. Thank you. With that, let me go ahead and open it up and find out if we have any questions. Councilmember Addis, do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions, but thank you so much to CFAC. Welcome to the new members, and thank you for Katie for jumping on board with all of this.
Councilmember Heller, questions, sir?
No questions, John, but I do want to thank you, John Martin, and your committee. CFAC does a great job for the city, and I appreciate the way you presented information, very digestible and easily comprehensible. And thank you for putting together the PowerPoint.
Thank you for those comments. And Councilmember Barton, any questions?
I want to thank the committee and commend you for the level of detail and dedication you put into your work. I'll be looking forward to hearing from your new member, Steve Peck, and he'll bring an additional perspective to the work of the committee. And I'm looking forward to the mid-year budget review and getting to see some of the things that have been deferred, and especially street maintenance is one of my interests. So I'll be looking at that when it comes up. So thank you again.
Thank you. And Councilmember Davis, sir, questions or comments?
No questions. Thank you to all the committee members. Appreciate your work very much.
Well, thank you.
Great, John. And again, my thanks to the committee. Please echo all the comments that were made by the council and carry them forward to your committee members, and we look forward to your continuous great work. I just wanted to make one comment that you shared and clarify. I believe that at a previous City Council meeting, when we were talking about our goal-setting process, I may have come across as making a comment that might have sounded like a negative comment regarding mislicking, but I wanted to clarify that and echo what you had said. Katie, I just wanted to let you know, I think you have come in and hit the ground running, not only running, but sprinting, and are doing an excellent job of leadership. My comments had to do with not your capacity, but capacity of the city as a whole to undertake the goal-setting process. So I just wanted to let folks know that I have all the confidence in the world with Katie. I've known her for a long time, and I'm just so glad she's here, and we appreciate your leadership in assisting Chairman Martin and the rest of CFAC in your duties as well, Katie. So thanks. John, thank you so much. Appreciate you, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Good night. All right. With that, folks, we will move to public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, this is general public comment for items either on the agenda for which you cannot stay, or items not on the agenda that you would like to speak to. Again, general public comment. And on the screen is the access information. You can access it by phone, or you can access it through the Zoom link provided on the screen. You do have three minutes for general public comment. And with that, Anthony, I'll go ahead and ask, do we have any public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do see a couple raised hands. I'm going to go ahead and start with Jackie Mansour.
Okay, great.
Okay, Jackie, you are unmuted.
Welcome, Jackie.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jaclyn Mansour, and I work for the Slow County Air Pollution Control District. I'm here today to let you know about some special grant funding available to businesses and public agencies in your jurisdiction through the Community Air Protection Program. The Community Air Protection Program focuses on reducing air pollution in low-income areas as defined by the state. In our county, that includes downtown Paso Robles, parts of San Luis Obispo, Moro Bay, Los Osos, Baywood, and Oceano. So projects within these areas will have funding priority. This year, we have a lot of money to put to work in cleaning our air. We have grants for new tractors and farm equipment, school and transit buses, and electric vehicle charging stations. Good projects to consider would be electric vehicle charging stations accessible to the public in public parking lots, charging stations for businesses that have frequent public traffic, or multiple fleet vehicles that could become electric, or charging stations for low-income multifamily residents. At a minimum, a business could receive an EV charger grant for at least half of equipment and installation costs. We have successfully granted and worked with several businesses and organizations here in Slow County, including Questa and Calpoli, hotels in Pismo and Paso Robles, school districts, transit agencies, even the city of Moro Bay and the city of San Luis. Applications for the Community Air Protection Program will be accepted January 18 through March 15. We are hoping the civic leaders of our county will share this opportunity with their constituents and point them to the Community Air Protection Program webpage on the slowcleanair.org website, or pass along my contact information. Again, my name is Jaclyn Mansour, and you can reach me at 805-781-5912. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaclyn, for being here tonight. I just wanted to comment, as the Vice Chair of the Air Pollution Control District of San Luis Obispo County, I appreciate the work that Jaclyn and her group does, as well as the rest of staff. This is a great opportunity to take advantage of grant funding that can significantly reduce pollutants in San Luis Obispo County. And so let me just repeat that. It's Slow Clean Air. It's S-L-O-C-L-E-A-N-A-I-R website. Please go there, look at the grant program availability, and take advantage of it. Very helpful. So Anthony, go ahead with our next public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Betty Winholtz is up next. Okay, Betty, you are unmuted.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. This is Betty Winholtz. I don't want to speak to any item on the agenda tonight. I'd like to speak to what's not on the agenda, and that's the WRF, and in particular, to the website being kept up to date. And secondly, I was expecting that maybe Mr. Casares would be updating us this evening, because he did not at the last meeting, and I thought it was time for a quarterly update. So I'm asking when that's going to happen. I'm sure others have noticed, as I have the tree cutting that's been going on, and that I've expressed my concern about that to the City Council. And in that light, in part of that email, I asked for how the city will be noticing the public, either as bicyclists, or pedestrians, or vehicles, that we will know when which parts of our area are going to be shut down, and where the detours are going to end up being. And if that could be spoken to, that would be helpful to the community, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Appreciate that. I'll wait till the end of public comment to comment on that. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, thank you so much. With that, I will go ahead and close public comment. And just with regard to a couple of comments made by Ms. Winholtz, thank you for the reminder about keeping the WRF website up to date. Per your email, we've discussed that internally, and I'm been told some action will be taken on that. And I believe, Mr. Collins, correct me if I'm wrong, but the next quarterly update on the WRF is due in February. I could be wrong, but perhaps you could remind me?
Yes, that is a correct. Good question, my Betty. We usually have it right after the quarter ends, but because these are more detailed invoices that we're dealing with now, council moved it to be two months after the close of the quarter. So that means it'll come in February. And good point on notification. We have a very detailed plan to do that, with Katz and Associates helping in that regard, and certainly missed on the trees. So that's our bad. Not required by law, but certainly should have done that anyhow. So thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, and thanks, Betty. I did follow those emails and was in contact with Mr. Collins, who followed up. I know responded and just got your response again to those comments, but thank you for that, being on top of that. Very much appreciated. With that, we will move to the consent agenda. This is item A in our agenda this evening. I'll go ahead and open up public comment for the consent agenda. Anybody in the queue? Anthony, for public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and close public comment on the consent agenda, and ask council if there are any items to pull. If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'd like to pull A7.
A7, Councilmember Addis, noted. Thank you.
I would like to pull A4, Mr. Mayor.
A4, Councilmember Heller, noted. If no others, I will take a motion for approval of A1, A2, A3, A5, A6.
No moves?
All moves to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Davis to approve A1, 2, 3, 5, 6, seconded by Councilmember Addis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Hadding?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes.
Thank you. I'll take these, not in order of the poll, but in order of their number. Councilmember Heller, A4, sir.
Yes, I just have a question about this source control program. I know the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the Division of Drinking Water has very stringent requirements in terms of how we treat our potable water. I'm wondering why we're codifying this particular issue as opposed to just following the regulations like we do for so many other things. So I'm just wondering if someone might know the answer to that.
Mr. Collins or Mr. Mueller? Or Mr. Newmeyer?
How about Mr. Livik?
Mr. Livik, there you are. Okay.
There you go.
We have a winner. Bingo.
The codification of this, these regulations gives the city enforcement authority to, during the implementation of these regulations, so allows, and as required by the implementing agencies, allows the city to enforce the regulations with the various discharges.
Okay, so that allows us to do that in lieu of waiting for the state or another agency to enforce issues?
They would require that the city enforce the sewer use ordinance provisions for discharges into our sewer system.
Okay. That's fine. That answers my question. Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome.
That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Heller, if you'd like.
I move to approve A4.
Great. Sir, second.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember, oops, to approve item A4, second by Councilmember Addis. Any further discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
And they are heading?
Yes. Thank you. That, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead and announce that vote.
Motion carries five votes.
Thank you. That moves us, Councilmember Addis, A7, please.
Yeah, I wanted to suggest to my colleagues that we let go of the July council meeting. I know there's been some discussion in the past about taking July off. And a couple reasons that I bring it up now is I think staff has a lot on their plate. This comes up every time we talk about a new agenda item, and it would give staff a chance to reset in the July month, kind of have that mid-year. I don't want to call it a break because staff is still working hard, but maybe a mid-year respite from having to write all of the staff reports and do the full council meeting. And then I think, you know, right now, we're pretty set on our goals. When we put a COVID goal in place, a number of council members, again, brought up the amount of work that staff has to do, the amount of items that have come before council and wanting to sort of streamline and minimize that. And then I know that a number of other cities take July off from having meetings to concentrate on getting actual work done. And then finally, it's always my hope that more and more people will get involved in city government, and I think the more enticing we make it, the better, you know, the higher chance we'll have of getting people involved. So I wanted to suggest that we amend the council meeting calendar to take off the July meeting and keep the rest of it the same.
Okay. And so I just, sorry about that. Ask Chris, a procedural point of order, since this is a proposed resolution, can we, on the fly, consider a motion to change the resolution to exclude the meeting as noted by Councilmember Addis?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, and specifically Exhibit A to Resolution 621, it lists the actual dates of the 2021 meeting calendar. So the motion would be to strike the July 13th meeting listed as regular meeting and just to replace that with break.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Councilmember Addis, if you'd like to make that motion, we'll get a second, then I can open up a discussion.
So I will move to strike the July 13th, 2021 meeting and replace it with break.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Addis to strike the July 13th, 2021 meeting from the regular calendar, second by Councilmember Davis. Any further discussion?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Please.
Yeah, I support the motion primarily because I think everything that we can do to encourage people to get involved in local government is a step in the right direction. Even though it's one meeting, it's symbolic of us saying, yeah, we're actually going to give you the month of July off. So maybe we'll get a little more interest in running for office and serving on committees. So just wanted to make that comment.
Good point. Thank you for that. Other comments? I'll just comment, I do support it. Thank you, Councilmember Addis, for bringing it up. I think it's well justified in terms of what you've presented as justification for that. And if there are no further comments, I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And they are heading?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes.
Great. That completes the consent agenda. We have no public hearings. That would be Item B. We're now on C, business item, business items, excuse me. And Item C1 is an update on the Morro Bay Tourism Business Improvement District conversion process, and I will turn it over to Mr. Collins, our city manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers and community members. I'm going to try to make this brief without being too brief because there is some technical points to this discussion, though this is not the first time for most of the councilmembers to hear this, certainly for our new councilmember. So I'll try to cover most of the bases and then allow plenty of time for questions since this is the only business item. So by way of background, the city has been operating or overseeing the tourism function for the city, for the community, that is, for the last several years, probably about four or five years. It used to be that the T-Bid was run, or the Tourism Business Improvement District was run by a nonprofit board of hoteliers primarily. The city took it on in 2016. We've been operating with that approach. Every year, the T-Bid assessment has to be renewed. That's through a protest vote. In other words, if 50% of the hotel revenue generation owners protest, then the T-Bid ceases to be, but it has been continued each year successfully since 2016. So that's operating under the 1989 law. With COVID being, you know, kind of a big discussion within the tourism world and lodging world, we paused all marketing operations essentially on March 19th, when the emergency was declared or thereabouts. And it gave the Tourism Business Improvement District Advisory Board, and really the lodging industry as a whole, an opportunity to take pause and take stock of how things are going. And in the course of several advisory board meetings, there was the interest in creating a stakeholder group to really review sort of the future of tourism in Morro Bay. And we had done a strategic planning process several years ago, which was helpful in many respects, but I don't think anybody could have predicted COVID-19 and ultimately gave us another opportunity to look inward and see where we want to go. That stakeholder group met several times over the course of July, I want to say, and looked at several key questions, primarily how things are going, you know, how do we move forward out of the pandemic, and where do we ultimately want to go as a tourism function, as a lodging industry? And it was pretty clear, almost, I think unanimous amongst the stakeholders, including hotel owners, vacation rental owners, restaurant owners, retail, and community members, is that it's important to have more of a long-term view on the tourism marketing and tourism function. Right now, we're on a year-to-year basis, so you sort of spend nine months out of the year working towards your goals, and then three months, you're sort of justifying your existence and getting approvals and then going through the council process. So there is an opportunity to convert to the 1994 law, which is a five-year cycle, and can be extended longer after the first five years to give you more of a strategic view. So that stakeholder group supported that. They also felt that perhaps under the city management, that there are some opportunities lost, and that, you know, we do have to go through a lot more extensive process than a private sector or nonprofit, and, you know, that perhaps our board makeup skews a little bit more away from the lodging industry, which are the ones that are responsible ultimately for collecting the assessments. It's the heads and beds, if you will, or the overnight stays that generate that assessment revenue. And that perhaps there could be quicker action and just maybe more of a strategic view if it's outside of the city structure. And then lastly, they felt there was an opportunity to really expand where and to who we market. We certainly have a strong connection with the Central Valley. This has been a place that folks have been coming to for generations, from Bakersfield and Fresno and other spots in the valley. But perhaps there's an opportunity to diversify sort of who comes into our community and at different levels of dollar spend when it comes down to it. So the group felt that perhaps, you know, you put all these pieces together, you have a longer-term view, a five-year window. You have those who are more closer to the ground, hoteliers and vacation rental owners sort of leading the charge in how we market, and then looking to who we market. That was taken in the T-Bid, I believe in August, and there was unanimous support to move that forward, and then made that recommendation to council. Council took that up in September, and similar, I think it was unanimous vote to move that forward, to start this process. That process being, let's work with a subcommittee of T-Bid members, myself, and a consulting firm that specializes in special district formation and changes to those. That consultant is paid for entirely out of T-Bid assessments and not city funds. We've been working as a unit, I believe, since October, and it made really good progress in starting the initiative. The first part of which is the subject of discussion tonight is the draft service plan. The draft service plan is the major components of the management plan, which council would have to approve, and the vacation rental owners and hotel owners would have to approve before it could go into effect. What that does is outline the budget, the service district area, the services to be provided by that revenue, the assessment rate, as well as the term of the, or the duration of the assessment. So what we're looking at in the work of the subcommittee, and which was supported by T-Bid, is that we do, it's a million-dollar annual budget that's based upon projections of where we're at today, to be paid for by overnight stays in hotels and vacation rentals only, not RV parks. The service district area would be the same as it is currently, which is the entire area of Morro Bay. The services would largely be the same, which is almost entirely focused on marketing and promotions in support of events. The assessment rate would be the same as the current T-Bid assessment, which is 3% on all overnight stays for hotels and vacation rentals, and that the T-Bid term be changed from a one-year cycle to a five-year term, to begin in July 1st, 2021, and running through June 30th of 2026. The T-Bid Board did discuss at length mainly on that, what type of services to be provided, as did the subcommittee. There are a lot of questions. I know several councilmembers have asked in the past, you know, could some of this money be spun off to either support or strengthen city services that are specific to tourists, like restrooms and trash service, or supporting infrastructure development that may have the tourism bent to it, such as waterfront improvements, or parking lots, or the things that really do serve tourists? They did kick that around a bit, and both the subcommittee and the T-Bid level ultimately felt it was important to continue to put as much resources into marketing because we're at a disadvantage to some of the other locations in our area, particularly Pismo Beach. 1% assessment for them garners a million dollars. 3% assessment for us is equal to 1 million. So we're certainly at a disadvantage. And then when you look at the city of Slow and Pass and others, our assessments just don't garner as much because we have less hotel rooms. So they felt that it was important to maintain that as much as we can, try to keep up with those folks we're competing with, though we all operate in the same ecosystem and partner with each other. Those dollars, you know, they make a difference where those folks stay. So that was ultimately the recommendation to T-Bid, is that we spend those funds on marketing alone and not on infrastructure improvement. Regarding the conversion process, as I mentioned, we're working with Civitas and the T-Bid Board. The major steps are approving the management plan, which I just discussed the main components to you tonight. And then we would go out and do a petition to the vacation rental owners and hotel owners to garner up 50% of the total assessment revenue generation. Once you've reached that level, then you can move forward into the next steps, which would then take us through the city council review process, which is, I believe, three meetings long. There's certain notification requirements and the like, but that would transpire over the course of the spring of this year, with the ultimate goal of launching the new T-Bid on July 1st, 2021. At the same time, you'd be decommissioning the existing T-Bid, which would, all the funds from that T-Bid would move into the new one. Another key component of that is the nonprofit board that would oversee this new, oversee it instead of the city overseeing the function. They have to approve bylaws and establish the board makeup and all the rules that go along with that. Civitas is assisting with that. We also have assistance from Chuck Davison with Visit Slow Cal, who's gone through this process before as well, and some others who are helping us. But we did ask T-Bid to give their preliminary thoughts on what would make a well-balanced nonprofit board. And not that their opinion ultimately becomes fact, nor what city council says necessarily will be what it is, but the input from both the existing T-Bid and council is important so that the board is able to move forward successfully and with consensus from folks who are, who will be important stakeholders moving forward. T-Bid Board recommends that the new nonprofit board be a seven-member board, like it currently is, that it have five seats that are dedicated towards the lodging industry that generates the revenue for the T-Bid. So probably four seats for hotels and one for a vacation rental owner. And then they felt it, you know, probably makes sense to have two board seats. It would be sort of city/community representation. They understand the key connection points with our community. They can't operate in a vacuum or without the support and facilitation of the city. They weren't specific about who or what type of person should be on that, whether it's a city manager, a staff member, or a council member, but they felt it was important that someone from the city is represented on the board, and that maybe either a restaurant owner, a retail owner, maybe just a general member of the community could also help in their endeavors and be an important connection point back to the community. So again, the key pieces tonight, we're looking for is your thoughts on the service plan. You know, again, is the budget set right? You know, the district area, is that correct? The services, you know, I think there probably is a good discussion to be had on that. The rate of 3% and the T-Bid term of five years. And also, if you have any input as far as what that board makeup should be, again, that won't dictate what we wind up doing. The board will establish itself, but again, it'll be very important to have council's input on that. So Chris is available, and I want to mention that he will be reviewing sort of the final docs for legal review, which will be very key in making sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's appropriately, and also doing all the notification process appropriately. But Civitas is doing the heavy lift, but Chris will definitely provide the important review, make sure we're doing everything appropriately. So with that, in my remarks, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
It's good. Thank you. Very nice overview. Appreciate that very much. Comprehensive. Maybe I can just start with, excuse me, a couple of questions. I shared a linkage with Councilmember Heller and the issue with regarding the infrastructure. I shared a linkage with Councilmember Heller and the issue with regard to infrastructure. And you were asking about input on the service plan. I did note in the service plan on Staff Report, page 83 of 86, that in the very first paragraph on the top there, one of the action items included investing in infrastructure. And I guess somewhere in the transition, that has changed. So the service plan contemplated that, but specifically, what was the conversation that changed and moved away from that potential?
Yeah, great, great question. And I know Councilmember Heller's asked a similar question. The, the main justification for investing in the, well, the two main justifications, I should say, for, for investing T-Bid in marketing and promotions are the following. One, the maintaining competitiveness with our, our neighbors. You know, 3% of assessment rate generates a million dollars for us. 1% generate, for Pismo generates the same. I think one for Sloane is the same and Pismo is the same. And those are all at 2%. So we're, we're already at a disadvantage. So spinning off any of those revenues for, for infrastructure puts, puts our marketing at a disadvantage. So that was a major point. The other is that from the vantage point of the T-Bid with the city's passage of measure E and other opportunities for revenue enhancements, that they felt that the city should be investing in that infrastructure. Of course, we would expect our hotel partners and vacation rental partners to invest in their properties as well. But that was sort of the, the discussion, were those two main points, that we should, we should find a way to fund our infrastructure and that we need as much money going to marketing as to stay competitive.
Okay. And with regard to the board makeup, recommended more consideration for a seven-member, five from the lodging industry, I heard you say, four potential hoteliers, one vacation rental VR rep, and then two, I'll call community, including a city-designated, either city council or city manager representative, and potentially the community member might be considered to be a business, representing the business sector. Is that where they were leaning with regard to that?
It, it was a great discussion, T-Bid Board. It was, I think half of the membership was leaning towards a business representative, but I, I think they were also, they weren't solid one way or another on that. I, I just think they felt that, again, two was the appropriate number to have something outside of the lodging industry and felt strongly about one of them being a city. But I think they were less prescriptive on, on the, the community member. But a lot of the good discussion about maybe it's a chamber person or a restaurant owner because of the connectivity or a retail owner for the same reason. So they, they sort of left it open. And again, that's sort of what we're looking for, general input from the council, so that can be shared with the ultimate board that will, will set these things in motion.
Great. And my last question would be, that seven-member, proposed seven-member board would be subject to the Brown Act, is that correct?
That is an excellent question. I believe so. And just, and I'll let Chris answer that. Also, you know, in addition to the council having approved this five-year assessment, you also review the budget every year, even though it already been approved that they must come back to council to get a budget approval. Sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Owners' Association that are created under the 94 law, which is what we're contemplating, the board, they are absolutely subject to the Brown Act. And to also elaborate a little bit on what the money would be used for, keep in mind that if there was the desire on the council's behalf to use any of the assessments raised for, other than marketing or, you know, tourism promotion, fundamentally, the businesses being assessed, the majority of the businesses would need to include that in the petition that they provide to the city council for the formation. So it's, it's really not up to the council how the money's spent. At the end of the day, it's up to the businesses who are voluntarily agreeing to be assessed.
Oh, so that prompted just another question, Chris. What authority does the city council have over the budget? I heard Mr. Collins say approve it, but is it just approve it? Does the buck stop with the city council? Could the council change it? I mean, I'm just wondering.
It's in, it's in cooperation with the board. So it's proposed to council, and if council, you know, wants to spend it in a different way, as long as it's within the parameters of, you know, the funding, what's properly funded as established by the original T-Bid, you know, the council can go back and ask the board if, if, you know, they'll change their recommendation. But at the end, at the end of the day, you know, the, a T-Bid is a voluntary association of business owners to essentially, you know, agree to an assessment, especially under the 94 law. And it's to provide a service to those businesses that otherwise they're not getting. So they have a lot of say in, in what the money's spent on and, you know, how it's spent.
Yeah, I think, Chris, the word cooperation is, is the best. I mean, ultimately, if council doesn't like what they see, you won't approve it, and it doesn't occur. And, and then it, but if council puts things in there that the hoteliers don't like, they're not going to approve it either. So you're sort of kind of finding what we all can live with. And as mentioned, that, that was one of the key issues and sort of anecdotes from some of the other hoteliers that are out, not on the bid, but connect to some of the bid members is that they want to see all that money driven into marketing.
Great. Thank you. Great. Okay. I'll open it up. Councilmember Heller, questions at this time?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is to kind of follow on the discussion is, so it sounds like the council could direct the, the new board to include a certain percentage perhaps for infrastructure and streets and parking improvements, but 50% of the participants in T-Bid would have to approve that as well. So that's the cooperation piece. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, in the sense that, look at the, the actual first step in, in creation of the 94, under the 94 law, the new T-Bid, is that you have a majority of the businesses based upon the assessments coming from them, sign a petition. You need to get a majority of them to sign a petition saying, please assess us this money, basically, you know, and then use it for X, Y, and Z. If you can't get a majority of the businesses to sign a petition saying, assess us for, you know, something the council wants but they don't want, then it's not created. So it's a long-winded way of saying that, you know, the businesses have, if the businesses want the money to be used for something more than what is traditionally has been used for, they would need to include that request in the petition that they submit to the city. And if we don't get a petition signed by 50% of the businesses based upon the assessments being paid, not based on the actual number of businesses, then we don't form in the first place.
Okay. So if the council wanted to make some kind of a revision to that work plan that would include a certain percentage for parking and street improvements, could we do that tonight or is that to be agendized and discussed at a future meeting or how would that be processed?
I think it'd be important to, to know where that is with the, the council. The management plan is, is pretty close to complete. So we need, we do need to stick to the timelines to get it ready to go for July 1st. So if there was a strong desire from the council to change that, I probably would want to go back to the T-Bid and see where, where they're at because they were pretty strong in, in not having that as part of the, the T-Bid. So that's, that's sort of the discussion point for the council.
Well, can we discuss that now or does it have to be agendized?
No, you can discuss it now. It's in the contents of the, the service agreement.
Okay.
Well, I wanted to do questions and then take public comment and then, yeah.
Okay.
Open it up. Question, if that's okay. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Don't want to cut you off, but.
No more questions. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Absolutely. Councilmember Davis, sir, questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Right. Councilmember Barton, please.
I don't have any questions. I'm, I'm glad to see this coming up and developing, and I, I know that this has been a, a long, a long haul. I was kind of surprised, not having been through this before, about how much more money is generated by other cities. And I guess that's part of our, our size, our quaintness, our little fishing village part, that, how that works out. But you can see that, that it's, it's tough to compete in this area. So I'm glad to, I'm glad to see the plan.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Addis, questions?
Yeah, I, we have received a lot of emails, especially during COVID, saying, please do not market to tourists. And I'm just hearing folks email to me saying, a million dollars on marketing is too much. I'm not saying that's my opinion, but I do get those emails. And so I'm just wondering what the response is to that, about why we need more marketing when we seem to have more people than ever coming to Morro Bay, and there seems to be so much concern from folks who write to council about the number of people coming here.
Yeah. I, I'll be the first to admit, I'm not an expert in marketing, or do I want to be? But having been in this position for three years now, I've learned, I've learned some things and, you know, depending on who you talk to, you're going to get a different response. And depending upon the circumstances, and if they've had a positive or negative experience with, with tourism, will get you a different response. COVID is certainly extraordinary, and we did not anticipate having a strong tourist season like we did this summer. And, and some, some of the negative effects of that, particularly with takeout dining being the predominant way of consuming food, kind of altered our game plan and, and created some more issues for ourselves. But that's across the board. And any, any place where people were visiting experienced that same impact. We're looking down the road here. This is a five-year plan. We're not going to be in COVID forever, so we probably have another summer like we had in the, in the past year, but then we're going to move on. And so, you know, we have to think about investing in the future. And so from that standpoint, if, if we decide to downgrade, downshift our marketing, we probably have more of the same. You know, the same kind of visitor that we've had that was problematic potentially this past summer, instead of a different visitor. And it'll send signals to the property owners, maybe they don't need to upgrade their facilities and just sort of come along as is. And that, that's okay. I mean, that, but that's sort of the perspective from those who work in this industry is that if we don't continue to sharpen our skill sets and our tools, then you'll get more of the same.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Thank you for that. With that, I will go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for item C-1 on the agenda. Public comment is now open for C-1. Anthony, any public comments, sir?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I do not see any attendees currently, so therefore there are no raised hands.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Open it up for general conversation or comments on this. Thank you for those great questions, by the way. Councilmember Heller, did you want to start us off? I think I, I didn't mean to cut you off. I was just waiting.
No, you didn't. That's fine.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'd go on and on if you let me go.
Thanks.
Yeah, I would like to follow up on that. The, first of all, let me thank the subcommittee and Scott Collins and the board. I mean, I'm really thrilled by this package, I've got to say. We're really headed in the right direction. I like the group very much. I like the work plan, except for one thing, which I'll mention in a moment. It really is solid. I really like what Civitas is bringing to, to the party. And I think, I think this is a great plan, and I'm glad it's a five-year plan. This is where I look at tourism, and we talk about a different visitor and so forth. I don't care if the visitor is different or not, but let's be honest, in terms of revenue, which we desperately need to keep our own fire and police department, we need people to spend the night, and we need people to buy more things here. And one of the things that I always think about, and I think a lot of people comment, and we talk about and talk about and talk about, is that the sidewalks at the Embarcadero are impassable over a fairly large section. As a visitor, I'm not coming back if I came here because on a crowded day, which we've had a lot of, which is great, it is a huge problem. So I really believe that 5% of this budget should be set aside for five years for improving the sidewalks at the Embarcadero. Now, I would hope that businesses that are not on the Embarcadero would see the importance of doing something like this, but I really think, I look at the Embarcadero as the place where most of the people visit. I see the people getting forced off the sidewalk every time I'm down there, even with a small crowd. We need to find some money to make those improvements, and I think this would be a good place, even though I know we're at the low end of the scale in terms of what other cities spend. I believe if we spent a little bit of money, saved a little bit of money every year for five years, we could at least fix our sidewalks at the Embarcadero. That's where I'm at.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Barton, any comments?
I know I saw somewhere in here a comment about meeting space, and now I can't find it as I'm looking through. But that's something that I'm, I've been kind of interested in thinking about what we have to offer and what could be something different. And so thinking in terms of like, small event kind of space that potentially could be rented for weddings or, you know, small conference facilities, something like that, is kind of an, an interest of mine to see how that, how that might evolve and, and help bring some of the, the different, the different tourists that we're looking for. So, and that, I think that, that would be a helpful thing. And I, I'm, now that I'm thinking about it, Jeff's point is a good one about the, the sidewalks, whether or not anybody's going to vote to widen sidewalks. It's hard to, it's hard to love a sidewalk, but it's easy to hate one that's not accommodating. So anyway, that's, that's my comment.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much. Councilmember Davis, sir, comments?
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to disagree about diverting part of the T-Bid revenue toward public works and away from marketing. The T-Bid is formed as a destination marketing organization. And if we, if we start assessing some of their, their revenue toward public works, to me, that's a mixing of apples and oranges. The sidewalks and other public works are a government activity. Those are actions that the city takes on as a taxing authority. Destination marketing is a business activity. That is a fee-supported program. And to me, taking, taking the marketing money and putting it into infrastructure is a slippery slope. You know, we can, we can say that the sidewalks need attention because they're so narrow that, as Councilmember Heller said, people won't come back. Well, the fact is, people are coming back, as evidenced by the overflow crowds. And I think the city needs to take the responsibility for improving its infrastructure. I would also like to talk a little bit about the board makeup. I attended the T-Bid meeting as the council's liaison. And as Scott relayed to us, the, the members present lean toward a seven-person board rather than a nine-person board, noting that it's easier to add members in the future if, if they want to have a larger board than it would be to reduce that number. And the consensus was that since this is a board that is responsible for dispersing lodging-related revenues, the greater number of the board members should be hoteliers, and they settled on four, as hotel owners with a fifth position representing the short-term rental owners, because that's about the proportion of revenue, 16 to 20% of T-Bid's revenue comes from the STRs. And for the, the community representative, discussion considered whether they wanted someone from the restaurant industry, from the chamber, or a local resident, and about half of the-- And about half of the members who were at the meeting leaned toward a restaurant operator for a couple of reasons. One is that the restaurant industry is closely related to lodging, and the other is that there is a possibility in the future of expanding the bid to include restaurant owners. And I agree that a community representative is important for a position, but I would leave it to the board to talk about that a little more as to whether they want a restaurateur or someone else. And maybe they would want to explore that question with members of the restaurant industry. There was unanimous agreement that the city should have a representative on the board, although, as Scott said, they did not discuss whether that should be a staff member or a council member. I checked with the other cities in Slo County, and none of their tourist boards include council members. So I would recommend that a city staff person fill that seventh board position. I've seen what happens when a council member attends the T-Bid meetings and then tries to participate. It's easy to give erroneous or misleading input if you don't know the history and the purpose of a T-Bid. So that's my feeling about the diversion of marketing funds and about the makeup of the board. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Davis. Well articulated. Appreciate that. Councilmember Addis, please.
Yeah, I tend to agree with councilmember Davis. Just in looking over the report and why the T-Bid was formed, it was really, you know, it says right there that it's formed to benefit the folks that are paying into the T-Bid. And so if they're saying to us that marketing is what's going to benefit them, then I have to trust that they're paying into the bid because they want to join together to pay for marketing. And so I'm leery of trying to override that. I do agree wholeheartedly with councilmember Heller that we need infrastructure improvements along the Embarcadero, so I'm excited to see the parking study come forward, and I'm excited to see what else we can do to create more infrastructure improvements down there. But I don't think the bid is necessarily the way for us to get there. And then in terms of who sits on the board, I'd want to really defer more to the bid. I'm glad to see this process moving along, and I think it's the right way to go. I'm leery of, you know, after our last conversation about the calendar, I'm leery of asking staff to take on one more thing. But I agree with councilmember Davis that it's not necessarily the role of council or would necessarily be helpful for council to be on that board either. So I'd want to hear what their ideas are in terms of what would be the most valuable in terms of fleshing out the board seats.
Oops, there we go. Great input also. Thank you for articulating your position clearly, all of you, for that. For myself, just a couple of notes. If you look at historically at the revenues raised, well, not revenues raised, but if you look at TOT revenues over the last number of years, let's say four or five, excluding the COVID period, and you look at spin-off sales tax, which is very closely related to tourism, obviously, and the amount of tourism we have, you'll note a flattening over the last four years. And I believe that it's articulated well in the service plan in terms of trying to market towards what I will call, just generically, a higher-quality consumer, so to speak, or a consumer from areas potentially where there might be the potential for more disposable income. The majority of city revenues, as you know, come from sales tax, TOT, and property taxes, TOT being one of the largest. And so from a plan standpoint, I think it's spot-on trying to really hone in on what areas specifically are we not drawing from that could improve overnight stays and improve spin-off sales tax revenue. And so I'm very supportive of that in the plan. With regard to the board makeup, I agree with what councilmember Davis and Heller, excuse me, Davis and Addis have said with their specific comments on the board. I would support that. I think seven is a good number, four hoteliers, one short-term vacation rental. And then from a city standpoint, I agree, I don't think it should be a city council member. And even though we're stretched at the city level, do believe that a city staffer should be involved and would support very much, not a general community member, but somebody from the business sector occupying the community seat, which I think is in line with what the comments, the comments that were made by councilmember Davis and Addis. Concerning infrastructure, it's a tough one for me. Right now, I'm concerned about, obviously, where dollars may come from in the future for infrastructure improvements. I do have a couple of other ideas I won't articulate tonight, but my sense is it's not going to go over well, nor is it going to be something that the hoteliers and group are necessarily going to approve of at this time. I'd like to see it discussed further. I was a little surprised to see it in the service plan as a discussion item, but I guess it did transition after a time and through discussions in the group, basically, they moved away from that. I think adding a half percent more to TOT could affect the market and may not be enough in terms of adding to infrastructure. So it would have to be a reallocation of resources internally, in my mind. And I think now I'd rather see the focus be on increasing overnight stays and what I maybe inappropriately might call the quality of consumer that we do attract. Lastly, I'll just comment that I'm very happy to see this transition to the private sector, not that the city didn't do a great job in managing this, but I do think there's advantage to having this transition, advantage to a five-year plan, and I am supportive of basically what I see in terms of the draft service plan with the note that I understand there's been a discussion on infrastructure funding that has moved opposite to what is in that document. And also, the board makeup, as noted previously. My last comment basically has to do with what councilmember Addis said. I note the date for completion is potentially July 1st, 2021. I'm not saying we're going to be out of the pandemic, but if we do a good job with vaccinations and attain herd immunity, we will be a long way, move a long way forward in being able to attract tourists back to the community and do advertising. And so I just wanted to note that the timing is potentially at the earliest July of 2021. And I know that we are curtailing marketing now and would like to revisit that at that time if we're still having issues. I would question the public health and safety potential impacts from broad marketing during the middle of a pandemic if the pandemic were continuing significantly during that time. So I just wanted to add that comment on to echo what councilmember Addis, I believe, was referring to. So with that, I would entertain, do you want a motion? It looks like you do need a motion for approval.
Mayor, it'd probably be good just to have it on the record. It's not necessary as part of the process, but again, another check-in is always good. So if you want to provide just a broad recommendation, that should be fine or not.
Well, did you, I could summarize what I think I captured from the other council members, but I thought I maybe was.
It's probably good to have it, just because I know there's a couple of differences of opinion, so probably good to do a motion.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could.
Yes, please.
Part of the recommendation in the staff report is approving the draft service plan. So if the draft plan that's been outlined is approved, you know, as outlined, then it would be good if council did at least a motion on that. And in general, you know, what was presented by the city manager, if council approves that, great, you know, there's a stamp of approval for moving forward. Would just be a suggestion for how to get a motion.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and try to make the motion. I would move that we approve the draft service plan as noted in the staff report attachment number two, and that in concept, we approve the formation of a new not-for-profit board made up of seven individuals, five lodging, two others, including city/community business individual, with a date, hopefully to attain that by July 1st, 2021, and that we have staff bring back the marketing plan, especially so that we can reevaluate what's happening with regard to the pandemic.
I'll start, Ken.
Okay, so a motion by councilmember Heading, second by councilmember Addis, and I'll take further comments. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Mayor Heading? I'm sorry, I said you already. I knew I said five. Thank you. I was curious.
Got it. Thank you, Dana. And that was 5-0, correct?
Six-oh.
Six-oh. Got it, too.
Yes, 5-0. Thank you.
Thanks again for the work. Please, Scott, would you thank our T-Bid Subcommittee? I think all of the councilmembers echoed their thanks for the work that they've done, and we do appreciate the tremendous amount of work that it takes to transition this. And thank you for your internal work and, Chris, for your work as well. With that, that moves us to item number D, council declaration of future agenda items. The burning issues for the July meeting? That's a joke. Hearing none, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. The next regular meeting of the City of Morro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, February 9th, 2021, at 5:30 PM via teleconference. Please be safe and be well. Remember to wear masks, socially distance, and frequent hand washing is imperative during this pandemic crisis. Also, please visit readyslow.org to consider vaccination in order to achieve herd immunity. Good evening, and we will see you at the next meeting.